Monday, September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, and I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment, silent reflection of future. All right, is there any declaration of any interest or general interest thereof? Deputy Mr. Stockman?
Uh, myself on the C O Treasurer, item number two, uh, to deal with drainage request. Uh, one of the persons requesting is a relative.
Is there anything else? Seeing none, so, uh, prior to the meeting, we had a closed session. It was under, uh, section two thirty-nine, two B and D, and we, uh, just ended that closed session, and we just have one item for the rise in report. Uh, Jennifer's, just, uh, to proceed as directed, or as discussed, I'm sorry.
As discussed.
Mover and seconded for that, Council McKinnon and Counselor Sanders. All those in favor, opposed and carried. We have our minutes from our previous meeting, which would be September fourth, twenty eighteen. A mover and seconded for those. Counselor Hendricks and Deputy Mr. Stockman. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Where are they? Oh, they're just, yeah, sorry. And we just have one item to add on to our agenda, and it's, uh, the staff report from our C O Treasurer regarding the site plan agreement for twenty-eight, six-ten Centre Road.
So moved.
Counselor McKinnon and Counselor Hendricks. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Okay, we have, uh, few items for, uh, few public items, public meetings and committee of adjustments, and those are scheduled for seven fifteen and then at seven thirty. So, um, moving into our correspondence. Uh, the upcoming conferences, seminars and meetings, uh, so our, we have a regular meeting coming up on Tuesday, October ninth, twenty eighteen, and then, uh, the next regular meeting after that is November fifth and then November nineteenth. I forgot that we moved that one meeting. Uh, first correspondence is, uh, regards to Eldon Bryant's retirement, and it's an invitation, and it's being held on October fourth, twenty eighteen, so hopefully everyone is able to attend that openness. And there is, um, I think it would be the presentations at two thirty. Okay, the next section is the recommended readings. The first one is from AMO, and it's the court of decision and next steps on Bill five. And the, uh, uh, item number three is from M C S C S, and it's the two thousand seventeen compliance, emergency management and civil protection. Any questions on those? So we need a motion to resolve the council received and filed correspondence items, C C one to C C three. Counselor Sanders and Counselor Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, so jump right into our staff reports. We have our drainage superintendent here, Jim Reeves.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to report, and, uh...
If, if I may, I asked our drainage superintendent to be here tonight because there is one large bill on the accounts payable listing, so if council had any questions, um, you may direct them directly to the drainage superintendent for review and discussion on it, so...
Brilliant lot.
Is there any questions? Deputy Mr. Stockman?
Uh, just a couple of questions. Wondering what the status is of the Cuddy Drive bore?
We're still, last I heard from, uh, we're still haven't had all paperwork out, way good from, uh...
If I may, I've, um, sent paperwork on to, we had a meeting, um, Suncor, um, some dignitaries from Suncor were all making a tour of Ontario a couple of weeks ago, so they called. Um, one was Christopher Scott, who has been here before. Um, they wanted to have a meeting with Mayor Smith and myself, just to introduce the new players within the area. So we had a nice meeting, um, did some introductions, discussed some funding options and the Suncor board, uh, forward them the information that's required, and we're hopefully going to hear back that they're not going to require us to enter a term agreement. So we've, we've sent it on, and it's in their hands to determine what their next step is.
Because I'm sure that people upstream would want to make sure that it's done before...
We relayed that quite heavily to them, that, um, under the drainage act, they are required to, uh, provide drainage, and we have to do that somehow through the municipality and that the people have requested it, and we're hoping that they can see fit to follow the, the, uh, provisions as laid out by Spree Associates in the second tender up round. Their concern is primarily safety of those that are working on the pipeline. Or they're around their, what they call a pipeline, so...
If I could add that, for, for whatever reason, Suncor seems to be more particular about working around their infrastructure than Next Era. But, uh, Spree's themselves have said that this has become a bit of an issue that in the future, when we're dealing with something like it, will be, uh, it will be a probably a substantial additional cost, let me tell them right off the bat, because it's just, they just kind of implemented a, a layer of bureaucracy that we didn't anticipate. We were told, it gives two weeks notice and you'll be able to go ahead and do it. It's just they can't handle it. But, uh, I, I did one down on Cuddy, on a repair, a year to go, and, you know, I, I was able to do it, but they, they wanted everything shut down. The turbines couldn't be turning while we're digging there, and they were on site, and then they canceled, and, you know, I had to rearrange the contract to do, it was just a drive and back over to come in and dig it, but it was just painful, that's just, this is our infrastructure, you're not coming in without, unless it's under our conditions, and you, okay, fine. And they murdered the drain, too, that was the interesting part of it.
Because there is procedures under the Drainage Act, which we went through, and they have the opportunity to provide input all the way through. And after it's gone through all the process, if they come later on, I kind of don't what I, what I feel like saying, too.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you'd had Mike here, he'd be feeling the same way, that, uh, very frustrated with it. And, you know, typically with these also, when you get into something that, that's, you know, precarious, you will start your bore on the side where the infrastructure is, so you start, you know, if you're going underneath it or above it, you, you start it up right, and then, you know, it doesn't really matter whether things go wrong the other end, but you don't start at the far side and then, well, you don't hit it going through. So it's, it's kind of foolproof. But there, it's...
It is.
Very frustrating, it's, uh, it, uh, this is gonna, it's one of the things that we've got now in our infrastructure here in our roads that we're gonna have to deal with, and every time that we have another petition, it's gonna be, uh, I think, uh...
No, that will be an extra cost. Yeah, you're right, Jim, if they came in from the other side, say, yep, we might be up or down, we're gonna might hit it, but if you're going in from the side where the line is, you know where it's gonna be, you're gonna be a foot above or a foot below, whatever it may be.
Yeah, and we verify where it is, we've gone in and hydrovac down, so we, you know, in that particular spot, and we get the pinpoint when, when, uh, Spree's asked me to, uh, to do that fieldwork for them, like, you know, it's not, it's not here directly. I, I have, and Mike wants to know, it's, it's gonna be within, to mediate away, we're not deviating because these things can, um, go up and down a little bit, too. So you pick your spot, this is where it's gonna go, you know, it's twenty feet away from a hydro pole or whatever, and, okay, this is where it's going, we hydrovac it, here's the depth, it's not gonna move, like it's... But they don't, as I say, with the power running through it, they don't want anybody, um, doing anything there, and I expect that they're gonna want to shut it down, and, I don't, I come in here days, and the whole operation, there's the wind turn by turn, and I shake my head, and...
Yeah, we're still choosing, that's the thing.
But I could, uh, just, uh, if I could just say something, from that meeting that Kathy and I had with Suncor, we made it very clear that going forward, we would not be having an agreement like they were requesting, it was going to be the process that we had laid out, so then there shouldn't be really a delay going forward. I think this is the first one where they, they requested that, and now they understand that we're not going to be giving, having an agreement with them, each, each time there'd be a crossing with that. So hopefully, that is understood, and going forward, there shouldn't be any...
I would expect Spree's will be, uh, through the Drainage Engineers Association, uh, will be talking as well, and it'll, it'll work its way up our end also, and, you know, this is a turmoil that we're, we're running into, not to say you're gonna, next time, but, you know, there are wind farms all over the province, and we've got drains all over the province, so it's, it's probably gonna problem again.
You got another question?
Yeah, uh, just wondering about the, the ward drain. I, if I remember, there was on the plans, tree removal, and I don't think there's any trees been removed along the laneway?
Um, I think it was if, if, if it was required, that the trees were gonna have to come out with, uh, um, I had, uh, met, met with, like, Mittens, for, for one there, and, and discussing the, the possibility that they were gonna have to come out, and they didn't really want to lose trees, but, uh, you know, the final outcome there, like, and across, uh, boss of property, to determine it, that wasn't, wasn't necessary.
I was just, it seems to me that the, when we looked at the plans, there was some trees that were going to be removed along that laneway, but, uh, I s- I think before they put the, the asphalt down, they did cut it down a little bit.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it, it has been, has been regraded. Mister Boss certainly expressed his opposition about losing, having to move the trees, so I, I'm not too sure whether Mike did some modifications to make sure that the water can still get through without having to take the trees down, but, uh, these are some of these issues that, it, it just gets very personal with the landowners, and, uh, you know, if there's an old rotten tree, and it was on the roadblock, and you maybe take it down, but it was on private property, and, um, you don't have to, or, or we would've been stayed here probably, and, and moved it, so...
Thanks.
Uh, Counselor McKinnon?
To Jim, uh, Wade in Goldstock by my house today, and wondered to vote for petition, had it been accepted and what, and I said it had already been accepted.
Uh, well, I talked to Wade last week, but I'm gonna, we, we, how can I speak for this?
Yeah, we're, we're following up, as I advise you, and we're following up, until the paperwork has gone to Spree's.
But there was a, the...
There'd been a death of the one of the petitions.
And, yeah, anyway, that, kind of, make, make sure that we, we started occurring engineering costs, that the family's still willing to along with it here, that, uh... I guess that's the advantage of being a small municipality, you know, landowners, you go, well, maybe we just better make, make sure.
I shall conform with that, thank you.
Well, I, as I say, I talked to him last week, we had done a couple of hearings, and we talked about that, but, he, he's, he's, he's doing his checks and balances, I guess.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Sanders, any questions? Counselor Hendricks? Okay, anything else, Jim, anything else do we need to be updated about?
Um, the Crowther's drain down where the powder ranch is, is, I'm not exactly sure why it isn't, they started, and then I guess they didn't have all the inventory there. Talked to Spree's late last week, and they are supposed to, I don't know whether they've been, anybody to buy, whether they're back in there, but that drain is supposed to be going, like, it's, the, the owners are paying a hundred percent of the costs there, and they hired their own contractor, and, um, there's probably an engineering bill that's gone through here that we have seen, uh, with geotechnical studies done, that we've got a little, little gun shy on, on ground conditions there, and Spree's mandated, that we had to get into, make sure that everything was gonna go all right, but, uh, it seems to me systems go, but, uh, it's been a, it's an expensive process, it's, uh...
Deputy Mr. Stockman?
There, there is a pile of, of three-quarter stone there, but I don't, it hasn't, there's nothing been happening there.
No, they did a far, you know, there's only a couple hundred feet at the very bottom end, back of the road tracks, and then beyond that, that they haven't gotten any proof, but that, yeah, there'll be a pile of stone committed, because all that, that plate is gonna have to be dead, so it's, uh, yeah, well, maybe you look at the, the, the cost, wow, uh... Other than that, I got all kinds of rumors going on, and we're working around, waiting for corn and beans to come out now, so that ever stop raining, and then you guys can get your harvesting done, and then we'll, there'll be more things to get done, so...
So if there's nothing, you know, other questions, or no, nothing else from Jim? We'll have a motion to resolve the council accepts the verbal drainage report from Drainage Superintendent Jim Reeves as presented. Deputy Mr. Stockman, Counselor Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, so we're gonna move back to our public meeting. So we need a motion to resolve the public meeting to hear zoning by law amendment applications at ZBA twelve twenty eighteen, uh, be open at seven twenty-one P M. So, Counselor McKinnon and Counselor Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, and I don't see any of the dodges and tuns, so, uh, Aaron, go through the report.
Sure. Uh, the first application, but...
I understand why you're looking at me. It's smart, Aaron. No, wait, we still have to do this. The purpose of the following public hearing for Ali Mac Cap Council is to give the members of council, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before council this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of decision made this evening to the local planning, uh, local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to council, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of this decision, please submit a written request to the township and assignment sheet has been provided for your convenience on that table. Yeah, I mean, go ahead, sorry about that.
Uh, the first application before council tonight is a report offering favorable consideration for a zoning by law amendment submitted by Brian Madaka for DNS Dodge and Sons. This is a property known musically as six-two-five-nine Calvert Drive. The purpose and effect of ZBA twelve dash two thousand and eighteen is to implement a condition of consent, which was previously imposed by this committee of adjustment on March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The committee conditionally severed a zero point seven hectare, a one point seven-three acre parcel of land in order to facilitate the disposal, disposal of a surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicants are proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel from general agriculture to surplus dwelling. This is to recognize residential use of the land and prohibit agricultural uses on these lands as well. In addition, the application is proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses on the remnant farm parcel. The application was circulated as per the Planning Act requirements, the conservation authority indicated no concerns with the zoning by law amendment, and no other concerns have been received at this time. Based on this, planning staff are in support of the proposed zoning by law amendment and have drafted a bylaw for council's consideration this evening. I recommend that council proceed with the first, second and third reading of the implementing bylaw, as the township is in receipt of a positive recommendation.
Okay, Aaron, is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to the application? Any questions or comments from council at all? So we need a motion to resolve the public meeting to hear zoning by law amendment applications at ZBA twelve twenty eighteen be closed at, uh, seven twenty-four P M. Uh, Counselor Sanders and Counselor McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Okay, we have the recommendation in front of us, and that is for approval, we have a mover and seconded for that. Counselor Hendricks, Counselor McKinnon, any discussion, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. So we have a few minutes before we go to the committee of adjustments. And we'll go into our first couple of reports from our C O Treasurer, Kathy.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The first item is the invoice payment approval listing for August thirty-first to September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, and emailed up two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Any questions on the accounts? No, none? Okay, so we have a motion then to resolve the council approved the account listings for the period of August thirty-first to September twelfth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars as presented. Counselor Sanders and Counselor McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried.
Item number two is a petition for drainage works by owners. We received a petition from Berkeley Farms Limited and Allen Ball for the Nit Ball Drain. The Nit Ball Drain was constructed in nineteen sixty-six, and the request under section four in the Drainage Act is for construction of approximately seven hundred and twenty meters of new tile drain and grass waterway. Uh, the engineers' report will provide for the apportionment of cost of the drain, the impact of the township a way minimal, as the road crossing is on Curwood Road, County Road Six. It is recommended that the council, township of Ali Mac Cap, accept the petition for drainage works by owners as submitted for lots six, seven and eight, concession one, S E R, and that Spree Associates be appointed to determine the validity of the petition.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Sanders. Is there any discussion at all? All those in favor, opposed and that's carried.
The second report, or the third report is in regards to, uh, strategic plan update. It's been well overdue since, uh, a last strategic plan has been provided to council. Um, council had approved a strategic plan for the township of Ali Mac Cap on February first, two thousand and sixteen. The strategic plan identified key priorities and tasks, uh, attached a report which outlined some of the priorities and tasks, along with the status update of them, and it's just the information is being presented for an update.
Okay, mover and seconded for the recommendation to accept the strategic plan update. Counselor Hendricks and Counselor McKinnon, is there any questions or comments on the new report? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried.
Do you want me to do another one, or do you want to go to, um...
Let's do the financial report. Uh, what do you want me to do?
Sure. You can do the financial report, or the, um, the one we have.
Let's not do that, it'll be one discussion.
All right, so, um, on your desk this evening was a financial report for, um, update as of September the seventeenth, regards to tax collection, as well as the payroll reports for the months of July and August two thousand and eighteen.
Is there any questions at all for the financial report? So we have a motion to resolve that council accepts the financial report, including July and August twenty eighteen payroll as presented by the C O Treasurer. Counselor McKinnon and Counselor Sanders, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to the committee of adjustment. So we need a motion to resolve, council convenes the committee of adjustment for the purpose of hearing consent application B O eight, two thousand and eighteen, B O nine, two thousand and eighteen, and B O three, two thousand and eighteen, at seven thirty P M. Counselor Hendricks and Counselor McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, perfect. So the purpose of the following couple of hearings for Ali Mac Cap Committee of Adjustment are to give members of the committee of adjustment, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the applications before the committee this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to the committee, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township and assignment sheet has been provided for your convenience on the table there. Uh, so we have, um, the three applications there. The first one we're gonna be dealing with is for twenty-one, uh, twenty-three Melwood Road, which is the, yes, Brian, application, thank you. Okay, so, um, yes, right, yeah, heard it, if it wanna come up, uh, to the seat right there, it's your, uh, the application for twenty-one, twenty-three Melwood Road, Melwood Road, or Dry, actually.
All right, so the next application before the committee this evening is a report offering favorable consideration for consent B zero eight, two thousand and eighteen, submitted by Urban Bryant and Ian Bryant. The address is known musically as two-one-two-three Mel, Melwood Drive. I do have to point out that in my report, it did refer to it as Melwood Road, several locations, I do apologize for that. Uh, this application is a resubmission of consent application B twelve dash two thousand and seventeen, which was originally submitted by Delmar and Sherry Dodge, uh, which was conditionally approved by the committee of adjustment on July seventeenth of last year. As the conditions of consent are not satisfied within the one-year requirement, the application was deemed to be refused, and the property has been since sold to the Bryant family. Uh, the applicant is requesting to sever a dwelling that has been being surplus to farming operations. The proposed lot is to be severed as approximately zero point four hectares, or one point zero three acres, with a frontage of approximately thirty-eight meters, or a hundred and twenty-five feet, along Melwood Drive. The remnant farm parcel will be approximately forty point zero eight hectares, or ninety-nine acres. The lands proposed to be severed contain an existing single detached dwelling and a garden shed. The dwelling is privately serviced with an individual septic system and well. However, as the existing well is located on a proposed lot to be retained, the applicants have also requested consent to establish an access easement in favor of the lands to be severed, over the lands to be retained. The lands proposed to be retained are largely in agricultural production and appear to have individual access from Melwood Drive. Policy and regulatory framework generally permits severances of surplus farm dwellings in Ali Mac Cap. This proposal has been evaluated under the stipulated criteria outlined in the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the Ali Mac Cap official plan. Based on this criteria, I am satisfied that farm consolidation has been achieved, and building is surplus to the farm operations. The dwelling appears to be habitable and was constructed prior to January first, nineteen ninety-nine. I would further advise that the lands to be retained would require a zone change to agriculture only, which will prohibit the establishment of new residential uses on the remnant farm parcel. There'll also be a requirement to rezone the proposed lot to be severed, the surplus dwelling established that it is now a residential property, and to limit the range of uses permitted. Based on the previous, I am satisfied that the criteria for surplus farm dwelling severance have been achieved or can be met through conditions of a provisional approval granted by the committee this evening. Uh, in accordance with the Planning Act, the application was circulated, the, uh, township's chief building official provided conditions for approval, and the conservation authority did not provide any comments. Uh, based on this, I am recommending that consent application B zero eight dash two thousand and eighteen be provisionally granted, subject to conditions. Um, I just wanted to mention that the following conditions are, in essence, the same as what was previously applied in the last application last year, however, we have updated sort of our verbiage, so, um, they are slightly different, but essentially the same. These conditions are as follows, that the certificate of consent shall be given within one year of the date of the decision, that the applicant solicitor submits an undertaking to register the electronic transfer of title, exactly consistent with the acknowledgement and direction executed by the applicant and decision of this committee of adjustment, that the applicant establish a permanent easement over the lands to be retained in favor of the lands to be severed, to facilitate access to the existing private water well, that the lands to be severed be rezoned to surplus dwelling, and the portion of the lands to be retained, which are currently zoned agriculture, be rezoned to agriculture only. Number five, that an adequate and potable water supply be demonstrated to exist, that unless replaced, the existing septic, septic system is to be inspe- excuse me, to be inspected, and the inspection report be provided to the township for determination as to any replacement or remedial works that may be required, that the habitability of the single detached building be confirmed by the chief building official. Number eight, that the existing steel closet building located on the lands to be retained be removed to the satisfaction of the township's chief building official. Number nine, that the drain assessment schedule be revised in accordance with the Drainage Act, as amended. Number ten, that the owner enter into a severance agreement with the township. Number eleven, that any outstanding property taxes for the severed... Number eleven, that any outstanding property taxes for the severed and retained lots be paid in full. Number twelve, that a preliminary survey be submitted to the satisfaction of the township prior to being deposited at the land registry office. And number thirteen, that two printed copies and one digital copy of the reference plan be submitted to the township.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Uh, Urban, do you have anything you'd like to add at all?
No, sounds good to me.
Excellent, is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to the application? Any questions or comments from the committee of adjustment?
Um, just clarification, you said that the Saint Clair Conservation made no comments, but they made a comment that, uh, it was not in the hazard lands and they had no concerns.
Right, sorry, if they don't, if they don't stipulate an actual, um, comment, I typically don't include it.
Alright, and then you also stated that the existing steel quonset building uh, be removed from the lands to the satisfaction. On the, um, uh, condition here, it has that it be made incapable of housing livestock, so...
Um, if I may, it actually has already been removed.
Okay.
So it was just a minor amendment to the condition to acknowledge that it was made incapable of...
So that's been met.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now that's going to be my question as well, so, because I already knew it was gone.
Yeah, yeah, Jeff's all approved, Jeff's all checked that all out.
Okay, yeah.
If I may, we, we don't tend to alter the conditions. Those are our standard conditions, that it be, um, either made incapable of housing livestock or otherwise removed. That seems to be, we've accepted that verbiage, so we don't want to alter it, so that we have, keep with the standard conditions. So if it's already done, then we can sign off on the condition immediately, so...
Just a curiosity question, how, how would you go about making a building that we, un-hatable, hatable, well, for livestock? Like, anybody could stick a goat or sheep or, in any kind of a building.
Yeah, well, they're not supposed to.
But, but I guess if I was to keep the building, w- w- what, which we were n- we're not interested in, but it's gone, but, but if it was, like, I was just curious, like, how would I make it? So I, I, I could not put a sheep or a goat in.
Right, if I may, um, we do have a change of use permit, that's, that's under the Building Code Act that we request that you complete under a building permit application. So it becomes a change of use, so you indicated to us, and we've approved it, that you have made it inhabitable to handle livestock. So if someone comes back and wants to do renovations or otherwise to it, then they would have to apply for a change of use.
Oh, okay.
And then it would be whether it be approved or denied.
I see, okay, alright, yeah, I was just curious.
Okay, is there any other questions at all? So we need a mover and seconder, uh, for approval to grant the application with the thirteen conditions.
So moved.
Council McKinnon and Council Sanders. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and not scared. Okay, thank you very much.
I'm done.
You're done. You're done the first time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have the, uh, next application here, which is B O nine two thousand and eighteen at, uh, forty-seven forty-seven Walker's Drive. And I'm assuming Kerrigan is here, cutting on attending?
He indicated earlier that he would be in attendance.
Could we tell him at seven thirty, who kind of guess what time it would be at?
No, we, we, um, set them for seven thirty, and they run consecutively, so...
Okay. When I continue on, it's nine minutes after seven thirty, so...
Yeah.
Could be stuck on walkers. He could be stuck on walkers.
Could be stuck somewhere else.
Go ahead, Erin, you can go through the report there.
Sure. Um, the next application before the committee is a report offering favorable consideration for consent B zero nine dash two thousand and eighteen, submitted by Kerrigan and Jennifer McDugall. The address is known municipally as four seven four seven Walker's Drive. The applicant is requesting to sever a dwelling that has been deemed surplus to the farming operations. The proposed lot to be severed is approximately zero point four hectares, or one acre, with a frontage of approximately forty-eight point eight meters, or a hundred and sixty feet along Walker's Drive. Remnant farm parcel would be approximately twenty point two hectares, or fifty acres. The lands proposed to be severed contain an existing dwelling and two accessory buildings. The dwelling is privately serviced with an individual septic system and well. Similar to the previous application, the existing well is located on the proposed lot to be retained. The applicants have also requested consent to establish an access easement in favor of the lands to be severed, over the lands to be retained. These lands, being the remnant farm parcel, are largely in agricultural production and contain a bank barn and a shed. The lands proposed to be retained do not appear to have individual access off of Walker's Drive. Policy and regulatory framework generally permit severances of surplus farm dwellings in alley of Metcalf. This proposal has been evaluated under the stipulated criteria outlined in the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the alley of Metcalf official plan. Based on this criteria, I am satisfied that farm consolidation has been achieved, and this building is surplus to the farm's operations. The dwelling appears to be habitable and was constructed prior to January first, nineteen ninety-nine. The applicant has requested that one of the accessory buildings be retained on the lot to be severed. The township's chief building official has required that the building be inspected by a qualified professional to confirm structural soundness. The applicant has also requested that the bank barn be retained on the remnant farm parcel. Again, the chief building official requires that a change of use permit be issued to allow for farm equipment storage only, and to prohibit the use of the building for livestock. The applicant has been advised that there is a requirement to rezone the proposed lot to be severed to surplus dwelling, as well as the remnant farm parcel from agriculture to agriculture only. Based on the above, I am satisfied that the criteria for surplus farm dwelling severance has been achieved or can be met through, uh, conditions of a provisional, provisional approval granted by the committee this evening. In accordance with the Planning Act, the application was circulated. The township's chief building official provided comments for approval, and the conservation authority did not have any concerns. Based on this, I am recommending that consent application B zero nine dash two thousand and eighteen be provisionally granted, subject to the standard conditions for approval. Um, as well as, um... Number one, that the cer- certificate... Certificate of consent shall be given with one, within one year of the date of the notice of decision. That the applicant solicitor submits an undertaking to register an electronic transfer of title. That is only by a law amendment that recognizes the residential use of the severed lot and prohibits new dwellings on the retained lot be in full force and effect. That the existing sheds in any degree be removed from the severed lands to the satisfaction of the township. That the existing shed retained on the severed lands be inspected by a qualified professional, and the inspection report be provided to the township to determine if it is structurally adequate and/or identify any remedial work that may be required. Number six, that the barn located on the retained land be issued a change of use permit to prohibit livestock and allow for farm equipment storage only, or to be removed to the satisfaction of the township. Number seven, that the applicant establish a permanent easement over the lands to be retained in favor of the lands to be severed, to facilitate access to the existing private water well. Number eight, that unless replaced, the existing septic system is to be inspected by a qualified septic installer, and the inspection report be provided to the township. Number nine, that the hab- hability, habitability of the single detached dwelling be confirmed. Number ten, that drain assessment schedules be revised in accordance with the Drainage Act as amended. Number eleven, that independent accesses to the land to be severed and lands to be retained are provided. Number twelve, that the owner enter into a severance agreement with the township. Number thirteen, that any outstanding property taxes for the severed and retained lots be paid in full. Number fourteen, that a preliminary sur- survey be submitted to the satisfaction of the township prior to be, goodness, prior to being deposited at the land registry office. And number fifteen, that two paper copies and one digital copy of the reference plan be submitted to the satisfaction of the township.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Is there any questions or comments from the gallery? Seeing none, any questions from the committee of adjustment?
If I may, we did have a neighbor, Cynthia Little, came into the office to ask some questions about the, um, application and the implications, and she has requested a copy of the decision.
Okay, there's no questions, we're finished. Moved by Council McKinnon, seconded by Council Hendricks. And that is to, uh, grant the application with the fifteen conditions.
Fifteen conditions, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And we'll continue on with the next one, also from Kerrigan and Jennifer McDougall, and that is the consent application B O three two thousand and eighteen at four two two five Calvert Drive, and that one was previously submitted, and it's resubmitted. Erin?
Okay, one more, one more to get through. Alright, so the final planning report before committee this evening offers favorable consideration for consent B zero three dash two thousand and eighteen, submitted by Kerrigan and Jennifer McDougall. The address is known municipally as four two two five Calvert Drive, on County Route ten. The applicant is requesting to sever a dwelling that has been deemed surplus to farming operations. The proposed lot to be severed is approximately zero point six hectares, or one point four acres, with a frontage of approximately a hundred and twelve point eight meters, or three hundred and seventy feet along Calvert Drive. Application for consent B zero three dash two thousand and eighteen was previously heard on the April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen committee of adjustment hearing. The application was deferred in order to provide the applicant and staff an opportunity to address the comments from the Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority and from Hydro One. The conservation authority have raised concerns that the proposed lot to be severed is located and completely within a flooding and erosion hazard area. They suggested an increase in the size of the lot to be severed into the cultivated agricultural lands to the east in order to provide sufficient area outside of the hazard area for redevelopment of the site in the future. The second issue to be addressed was that the lands proposed to be severed are provided hydro service from a separate feed located on the proposed lands to be severed. To be retained, sorry. Uh, the lands proposed to be severed contain an existing single detached dwelling, as well as a detached garage. The dwelling is privately serviced with an individual septic system and well. The lands proposed to be severed include an existing access onto Calvert Drive. The lands proposed to be retained, being the remnant farm parcel, are largely in agricultural production. A hydro corridor runs through the center of the lands to be retained. This corridor provides hydro service to the dwelling through a separate feed. Policy and regulatory framework generally permit severances of surplus farm dwellings in alley of Metcalf. This proposal has been evaluated under the stipulated criteria outlined in the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the alley of Metcalf official plan. Based on this criteria, I am satisfied that farm consolidation has been achieved, and that this building is surplus to farm's operations. The dwelling appears to be habitable, and was constructed prior to January first, nineteen ninety-nine. The applicant has requested that the existing garage be retained on the lot to be severed. The township's chief building official has recommended that if the building is to be located on the lot to be severed, it is to be inspected by a qualified professional to confirm structural soundness. Planning staff has met with the applicant, and we have discussed several options related to the hydro pole location issue. The applicant has been in contact with Hydro One and will proceed with the relocation of the hydro service line on the lands proposed to be severed in order to gain access from the road right of way, rather than the lands proposed to be retained. The applicant has also indicated that an enlargement to the proposed lands to be severed would be appropriate to ensure sufficient area for the hydro service relocation, as well as address the comments from the C R, S C R C A. Planning staff are in agreement that this would be appropriate, and recommend an increase in lot frontage for the proposed lot to be severed to a hundred and twenty meters, which would result in an area of zero point six seven hectares, or one point six three acres. Uh, I would further advise that the lands to be retained require zone change to agriculture only. There will also be a requirement to rezone the lands to be severed to surplus dwelling, to limit the range of uses permitted. Based on this, I am satisfied that the criteria for surplus farm dwelling severances has been achieved, or can be met through conditions of provisional approval granted by the committee this evening. In accordance with the Planning Act, the application was circulated. The township's chief building official and county engineer provided conditions for approval. Based on this, I am recommending that consent B zero three dash two thousand and eighteen be provisionally granted, subject to the standard conditions, as well as, um, condition number three, that the applicant revise the area of the lot to be severed to be approximately zero point six hectares, or one point six acres, with a lot frontage of a hundred and twenty meters and a depth of a hundred and ten meters. Number five, that the hydro service for the lot to be severed be wholly contained without encroaching onto the lot to be retained, or that a hydro easement be required in favor of the owner of the lot to be severed over the lot to be retained, to allow access to the hydro service. Uh, number seven, that the garage be inspected by a qualified professional, and the inspection report be provided to the township for determination on structural adequacy. And I believe that the rest are our standard conditions.
Okay, Erin, is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to the application? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the committee of adjustment? Okay, so we have the recommendation there that the application be granted, uh, with the fifteen, sixteen conditions. Maybe by Council Sanders, seconded by, uh, Council McKinnon. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, that's everything for Erin, is there any questions at all, Erin?
Good comment, good to see that the maps now, uh, both are, you did the right way.
Excellent, okay, thank you, Erin. Alrighty, so we'll go back to our staff reports, we just had that one, uh, report, so it is added on to the agenda for the C A O Treasury, which was the site plan application for twenty-eight six ten Center Road, and it's regarding the security, um, reconsideration.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, so the, um, site plan has received all the approvals required from the county, from our engineer. We're now working on the site plan agreement. Uh, it was, um, discussed with the, um, Dave Hammond from Zinkupriannell, who is the planning consultant for two four one four nine five nine Ontario Inc., who are the owners of the site. And they have raised concerns with the security requirements. So that was discussions that were held last, uh, Thursday or Friday. And attached is a copy of a letter that was received today at three thirty, which I advised that we would put on the agenda tonight, because I had a security spot on the agenda. It's a lot to take in, but essentially what they're concerned about is the requirement for fifty percent of the cost of the onsite works, even though it's an irrevocable letter of credit, and one hundred percent of the offsite works. Um, for their estimates, the onsite landscaping would be a fifty percent deposit of sixty-seven thousand dollars, and the onsite engineering works would be a deposit of four hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. And that would come to the township in the form of a, an irrevocable letter of credit. The offsite works, which is the signalized intersection, will be payable to the county of Middlesex in the amount of a hundred fifty-one thousand, one thirty, and that's for the future of the signal lights to be installed. So they're asking for council's consideration of either lowering the amount of the onsite works to ten to twenty percent of the cost, which they feel is much more reasonable, and provides them a better ratio of, of capital to what's being in- installed there, and not unreasonably tie up their securities. Uh, there's some other information there that they've included, just more to support their stance on what we should be asking for. Um, they have no problem with giving the hundred percent of the cost to the county for the signalized intersection at this point. It's just the township portion of the fifty percent. They also requested that we consider, um, changing some of the draft site plan agreement, which states that the letter of credit will only be released upon one hundred percent of the works and facilities being completed by the owner. Um, there is, this is going to be a multiple year and multiple building venture, so they're concerned that if we keep their hundred percent of the works and facilities for that long, it may not be in their best interest. So they're asking for council's consideration in that. And as I pointed out, uh, we just, um, we didn't just make fifty percent up out of the air either. Other Middlesex County municipalities use the fifty percent of the onsite works as their barrier, as well as the city of London. And we also received the advice from the Middlesex County barristers and solicitors. And we also received the advice from the Middlesex County Barristers and Solicitors Office. So, um, it's kind of last minute, and there's a lot of numbers there to take consideration of, but basically they don't want to pay fifty percent of the cost of the es- the estimated cost of the works. So it's up to council if you want to review the security requirements that were previously approved, or you may choose to leave them as is and have the, um, developer decide what they want to do to achieve the fifty percent.
Well, we certainly don't want them to leave.
Yes, so.
So what's our option?
So, um, in, in some discussions, uh, they are looking at a ten to twenty percent, uh, onsite works as well as also a great, gradated amount returned or being able to replace their letter of credit in a lower amount as items get completed on.
I like to see that. I could understand that, because, you know, we're talking maybe two or three years to.
Yes, it's, it's, they're proposing three years. They're estimating three years. So different buildings will be done at different times.
Yeah.
Um, right now, the fifty percent security is four hundred ninety three thousand nine ninety seven ninety. That's for the works on the land. Um, taking out a mid stand between fifty and twenty. Uh, thirty percent, they would give us a security deposit of two hundred ninety six thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars and seventy four cents, which could be quite reasonable. I would recommend that council, um, really seriously consider reducing the landscaping deposit, because that's one of the last things that will be completed in all aspects. So, um, we wouldn't necessarily see all of the landscaping completed until the full buildout has been completed. So that sixty seven thousand, um, possibly is something we should consider keeping and po- and once.
Consider what?
Keeping it at the sixty seven thousand until a substantial amount of work is done, and then look at possibly, um, you know, after two thirds of the work is done, giving back seventy five percent and still retaining a small amount until the complete work.
Right, yep, yep, yep.
And there's also, um, some consideration of phasing it in. Um, possibly looking at, uh, doing it as a twenty five percent. If the certain buildings are completed as phase one, we'd, uh, have them submit their letter of credit in a reduced amount by twenty five percent of the total. And once phase B is completed, which would include the hotel, reduce the amount required by fifty percent. And then at the, the last phase, complete the, uh, work, keep it at twenty five percent until then. So split the, um, the, the deposit into four different payments with, as the, as items are completed, and the hotel being the substantial, the largest portion of that. Once it's completed, then they would get the majority of their money ref- uh, not necessarily money refunded, but the letter of credit would be reduced significantly at that point.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, um.
And that makes sense.
Yes, we're looking at, at possibly looking at a thirty percent, um, letter of credit. Again, it's not tying up, they're, they're tying up some funds, but not a lot of funds. And then also looking at keeping the landscaping at the fifty percent until it's completed or until it's significantly completed.
You can go on that. Yeah, I think that's good. I think thirty percent, uh, they should go for that. They're asking for ten?
Ten to twenty.
Ten to twenty, so no, I think I try thirty and, and go from there. I, I, at, at, at stages as you were talking about, I think that's good. We certainly don't want to lose them. And we gotta be, make sure we're covered, so. Yeah, I think, yeah, I can go along with that.
Any other comments or questions? Deafness Stockman?
I, uh, as Gerald said, I think we need to work with them as best we can, uh, to ensure that they keep moving forward, but that we have adequate coverage, but we've got to be flexible. Uh, you know, if, uh, if it looks like it's gonna need to be a twenty seven percent or something like that, well then, uh,
That'll be it.
We work, we work with them because it's benefit for, for the whole community.
Yep.
So, uh, you know, and, uh, it's sat for a long, long time. Uh, we have moved this, it's moved along a long way. I think we need to, as best we can, you know, be as flexible as possible to make sure that this continues to go ahead.
Yep, absolutely. And I, I think they'll really be happy if they, if we can do it in stages. I think that, that's worth quite a bit to them, so I, no, I agree with you. We gotta try to work with them and, yeah. Yep, and be covered.
Yeah.
Council Hendricks, anything you want to add?
No, that's pretty long my thoughts.
So, um, if staff proceeds and works with them and negotiates an agreement, how does council want to be advised of that? Would you like to? Um, I know they're in a, in a, a hurry. They want to get some removals done before the winter comes in. Um, does council want to meet in special session once we've had an agreement hired out and we're to that point where council could approve the site plan? Or do you want to leave it with staff to negotiate something around the thirty percent?
Do that.
A reasonable, um, progression with the file agreement to come on October the ninth. Is our anticipated date is October the ninth to have the, the agreement signed?
No, no, I think if, if, if you guys can make an agreement that's within reason what we're talking about here, go ahead. That's my opinion.
I think that's good. That consensus, yeah.
And if they sign the, the draft or, or the agreement, why just relay that we're in favor of the conditions as set out, so that they're aware that we're not gonna hold them up on the night.
Council, you can carry it. We're not in motion.
Yes.
Happens in a working motion for you.
Okay, listen.
Unless you have something.
So we could say that resolve that council authorize staff, uh, to negotiate the security requirements in a phased in plan.
Phased out plan, alright.
Well, I think we'd like the phases.
Yeah, but I'm okay to get one just.
Yeah, yeah.
In the phased of plan. So, so a phased out, let's negotiate the security requirements in the site plan agreement on a phased, on a phased plan, just a phased plan because it's not necessarily in or out, so on a phased plan related to twenty eight six ten Center Road.
What's the matter?
And a percentage.
Yeah, thirty percent.
Of thirty or within that range. Right?
Yeah, that should go in the motion.
So the security requirements in the range of thirty percent of the.
Uh, if it's twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty six, I think I can.
If it's thirty percent of the.
Oh, I think, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Works and facilities, I think it's the interior works and facilities, onsite, onsite.
We can just have it that it's relating to their phases of the development. So that's not confusing.
Phases of development.
Yeah, so it's not confusing as to phase in and out.
Yes, or phases of development.
So that's moved by Council Sanders, seconded by, uh, Deafness Stockman. Is there any further discussion? I think everybody understands what we're, what the motion will say.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of these, I'm not, I don't really, no, it's. I tried to call in, we gotta be.
No.
Okay, so that's the end of our staff reports. Would you have Jeff Bull here? If there's any questions at all for him? Deafness Stockman?
I've heard ninety two. Oh, well, uh, as we know, uh, Colter and Richard went to the provincial truck rodeo last Wednesday, uh, to represent Middlesex County. Uh, Richard, uh, placed second.
Ooh.
And Colter placed fourth. Um, it was just a matter of points from first to, to fifth or something like, very little points. I think there was only about four, uh, between Colter and Richard. Uh, that's how close, that's how close it was, so. Uh, again, very good. I know, uh, Richard, I think, was disappointed. I know all the time. But I said, uh, second place is still, uh, for provincial, for provincial is still, uh, pretty good. I think that is excellent, so, uh.
Those two are great.
Exactly, exactly, so, yeah, so, uh, Richard second and Colter fourth this year.
Council Sanders?
One question, Walkers. You're flying through there, are you?
We're going pretty good.
Yeah, I see you're over at ADI well already.
We got the digouts done. Um, now we're leveling up the road with some bee. Uh, got some ditching, ditching full blast. Uh, with this dry weather, we're taking advantage, uh, of getting the dirt, the dirt.
Have you got, it's Anderson draw, and then I see those drawing down County Road six.
Yeah, we've got, uh, multiple contractors.
Yeah, those are different, I said, I think they're heading for Walkers.
At one point, uh, well, at one point today, there was three high hose on site, uh, in a single block, but, um, yeah, no, it's going, going well. We gotta take advantage of the good weather.
Oh, absolutely.
Three blocks, uh, at this time of year. Uh, if it was a wet fall, it, it would be disastrous, so, uh. Yeah, no, everything's going on really well. Uh, proud of the guys, uh.
Is Eldon helping out too?
Eldon, Eldon was there full blast today. He's got, uh.
I got stuck behind Eldon.
Did you? Um, the last Friday, no, uh, the first week we started, we lost a, a small drive shaft in the older John Deere grader. Um, it just, uh, universal went in.
Yeah.
Nothing major, didn't blow apart or anything. We caught it before any real damage other than replacing. But in the meantime, we had to, um, uh, rent another grader to keep things going. So, uh, Eldon was quite happy. It was a, a grader that, vintage that he had driven before, so, you know. So he was, uh, quite happy and, uh, so, yeah, no, things are going along really well.
Good.
Curious how many mailboxes you're actually gonna end up having to replace, because I saw two or three of them laying down.
Well, uh, uh, good question, Mr. Mayor. We do pull them, so we do take them out and lay them down. Hopefully no one steals some or whatever, but I hope by the end of the week to have them all back up now that the road's broken out. Um, I talked to the mail, uh, person, and they said, uh, people can pick their mail up in town, but I want to get them back up now that we've got the shoulders stuck out, so, so, yeah, so hopefully we can get that back up, so.
Okay, yeah, Deafness Stockman?
Anything on the, the well, that's for Napier Garage?
Yeah, so, uh, the well went in last week. Um, we've got, uh, water, uh, four gallons per minute, no sulfur. Um, it's on, um, if, if everybody knows the Napier Garage, there's, as you come in, there's two lane ways. You can actually come in and, and, and veer back out on the road. So when they witched it, uh, one of the location was in that semicircle, and that's where they put it. So we'll have to protect it well. We'll have to get some cement blockage or some paper to make sure everything's good there, but.
Amazing, that ain't sulfur. I'm surprised. How deep?
They were ninety feet. So they estimated at eighty, so they hit it at ninety, and, oh, that's, that's really good.
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 Very good.
And, uh, one more little thing. I was coming, uh, north on Pike, and the south side of the bridge, there's only, uh, the, the hazard marker on the left, right, left hand side. There's none on the right hand side.
What's missing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I hadn't been through there in a little while, but, you know, that, uh, and that hash mark, it's missing, missing on the south side, on the, the right hand side.
Look at that, because that's pretty important, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
In the dark, uh, warns people that can.
And that's it?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of other things I'd just like to update council with. Uh, the surface treatment, uh, took place last week. It has been completed. Uh, they pulled it up this morning, so, uh, MSO was in and gone, and, uh, from what I've seen out on the road, it looks like they did a, a good job. I have no, no issues whatsoever. Um, uh, what else do we have? Uh, the one thing I wanted to update council on, I had a message from Embridge Pipeline. They're going to be doing some work, um, on their pipeline that runs, uh, just, and again, um, near Townsend between Seed and Langdon. Um, they have an access there. They have a laneway off Townsend. Um, so they really, they've contacted the county also, because it's a county road they're coming in off of. I think they're just wanting to update everybody what, what's going on. So they're working on their, their property, their line, um, so I just want to make sure council was aware of what was, what was happening there, so. Um, there's no date, because they wanted to make sure everybody was aware that the work was gonna take place before they actually set a date, so. So they'll be coming up, uh, later. Um, yeah, and that's, uh, that's the, the update, uh, that's all I have for update. Lots of work on Walkers.
Okay, Council McKinnon?
Just wondering, did you check into Jim House, uh, gravel on the.
I did. I was over to see Jim House, and, um, it, it, I think it was more, I didn't see a wash of, under the road.
Under the road.
I saw, um, the gravel from the road needs to be brought up.
Oh.
So now that, uh, the process, now that the surface treatment, um, has been done, when we get a chance, we're gonna go back in and tighten up the shoulders with the grader, bring the shoulders up, and add any extra gravel if the shoulders are not. And that's the area where it has fallen off. So it wasn't undermining the road, but it had fallen off. It was an acquired, Mr. Mayor, from, uh,
Repair on Scotchmere.
And also too, we'll touch up all the lane ways on Scotchmere now. We don't do it until the, the surface treatment is done, because we want the surface treatment to wrap around the edges. Um, is the idea there. So in the next, uh, week or two, as soon as we get some wet weather, we'll be down there. Lane ways, shoulders, and, um, uh, um, Mayfair and, um, Mayfair and Springfield will, the leagues up there will probably get gravel also and make it smoother, so.
And second question to Jeff, um, Leroy Thingstra. We're here to make a connection with you.
I, I, uh, contacted Leroy. I'm meeting actually with Leroy, um, tomorrow at eight thirty and to see his concerns. Um, I'm, I'll, I'll follow up.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions at all for Jeff?
Nope.
All ready. Okay, on to other business. Is there anything at all for you, Council? Uh, just the one thing that I noticed actually earlier today is the stop sign at Pike and Amperton on both sides have been, uh, updated, and they're much larger than they were, so.
Oh, okay.
That's just about, then I guess, uh, earlier today.
It's interesting the way they're, they're doing the repair to, uh, Pike on their railway. They've set the, the ties and the line along the road allowance. And then on the twenty fifth and twenty sixth, I like where you do that section and replace it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I have my brother-in-law from D C down, and he said, my, you people put your railway ties and railway lines in a funny place.
Short line, short line.
Yeah, short lines.
Okay, if there's nothing else for other business, we'll go into the bylaws. First one is resolve that the third and fiber, given to bylaw number forty five two thousand eighteen, which is the zoning bylaw amendment for Z V A ten two thousand eighteen, which is the Ben Giffen one, and that the bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and corporate seal be attached.
So moved.
Council McKinnon, and seconded by Council Sanders. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And then the last one there, which is resolve that all three readings be given to bylaw number fifty two thousand eighteen, the zoning bylaw man, amendment Z V A twelve two thousand eighteen for the DNS Dodge and Sons Limited, and bylaw number fifty one two thousand eighteen, confirm council proceedings, and that the bylaws be signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal be attached.
So moved.
Council McKinnon and, uh, Council Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And the last one is our German at eight fifteen. Okay, Council Sanders and Deafness Stockman, all those in favor, and that's carried.